Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Brock Neely, resident of Porterville, address on record. Madam Mayor, I respectfully request the point of personal privilege to speak to items 21, 22, and 23 on the agenda when the items come to the floor for discussion. Due to the animus that it being used impugns the chair and my personal integrity, I feel I have the right to defend myself and explain my intent to request people's attention.
We're not going to be addressing those prior to those items coming up because they're going to be coming up pretty much soon. So if you can just go ahead and make whatever comments you want right now.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
First of all, I'm going to give these to the council.
Uh, Mr. Law.
I'd like to bring the attention to those items as reputable statistical reports that cannot be refused by the CDC and NIH.
Okay. I'm sorry, just a moment. I apologize.
These numbers never lie.
If we could please have, we're asking for respect from the individuals in our chamber to please, as we're discussing, I would ask the council to have the same respect for the residents in our community, please. Go ahead.
Amen.
As to item 21, and the accusations that it was rammed through, this item was brought to the mayor on the Wednesday prior to June 4th, asked if it could be on the June 4th agenda. If not, it was finally on the subsequent agenda. Due to two other items being changed on that agenda, the agenda had to be amended. So as that procedure began, this item became part of the June 4th agenda. There was no ram through. Also, there is accusation that this was posted a week and a half to two weeks prior to that meeting. It was not. I didn't even concede the idea until the Wednesday before that meeting. So any other accusations are impugning my integrity. As to item 22, how can you rescind something you did not vote on? According to Robert's Congressional Procedure, you cannot rescind an item that you did not vote on. As to item 23, I am terribly offended that a proclamation is being replaced by a resolution. There is a difference in legal import on those two items. A resolution is a legal binding document that takes a vote of the legislative body or enactment of legislation of some form. It stays in place until it's rescinded, or superseded, or sunsetted. Also, the wording of the resolution is offensive. Experts claim that my being is not a lifestyle, it is an orientation. So how can this be goodwill and charity to all? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Thank you, Mayor Barola. My name is John Coffey, address on record. For the benefit of the two newest council members, it might be beneficial to have a brief history of how we have arrived at this point. We are here at this time. Five years ago, the Porterville City Council passed a "resolution," and that's a quote, in support of Proposition 8. It was the only city council in the state of California to do so. All five members of the council at that time voted in the affirmative. As you know, both the California State Courts and the federal courts have since ruled that Prop 8 was and is unconstitutional. During the course of those trials, the courts, both state and federal, have determined that the LGBT community is a, quote, "suspect class," meaning that any legislative action regarding this group is subject to, quote, unquote, heightened scrutiny. I'm sure that the city attorney can explain what that means if you ask her. Then in 2009 or so, the council attempted to pass a "resolution," again in quotes, in opposition to SB 54 by Senator Mark Leno of San Francisco. That motion failed on a 2-3 vote. By the way, the same council members who pushed for the Prop 8 action, the Prop 54 action, or the SB 54 action, excuse me, are tonight pushing for the rescission of the, quote, unquote, proclamation regarding the month of June. By the way, how do you take back an action that has already expired and never voted on? Tonight, we are here to begin with an anti-LGBT action being proposed by a member of this council to rescind a proclamation that recognized the month of June as LGBT Pride Month. In my opinion, and I'm no lawyer, but all of these actions taken together show a clear animus by the council toward members of the LGBTQ community. When is enough enough? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Trina Leon. Two things I want to address. First, what the mayor of Porterville did was wrong by proclaiming June 2013 as Gay Pride Month. What you did, mayor, was abuse your power for your own personal agenda. You, mayor of Porterville, made your own personal proclamation. I was on the website of the city council, and there was something I noticed. It said in a request for the proclamation, I made a copy of it, and it said, "Presenting them with an official proclamation from the city council." The city council did not do this proclamation. You did, mayor. You, the mayor of Porterville, owe the fellow city council members an apology for what you did, and also the community of Porterville. You owe us an apology. The city council speaks for the voice of our community, and how the city council members refuse to sign the proclamation speaks volumes to me on where they stand. Secondly, mayor, you said you thought this would bring our community together? How could this be? When we, the Christians of this community, believe God's Holy Bible is true, for us to accept this proclamation would be calling God's Word, the Holy Bible, a lie. We all will give account to God for our days, Your Honor. The one thing we must do is show love to mankind, show love to each other. I love each and every one of you here with God's love, but I cannot support in my Christian belief what I know is wrong. I ask the city council, will you vote today to please vote with your conscience and your convictions? And please vote to rescind, yes I said, please vote to rescind, the proclamation that our mayor did without the consideration for our council members or our community? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Amory Waxstaff, 382 North Indiana Street. I am a lesbian, I am a Christian, and Porterville is my home. Listening to debate this past month and a half, I have felt as if the threads of my soul were being yanked and tugged in all directions. Many silences have been broken, and only time will tell whether our community has grown. So what is left to say? The replacement resolution you will consider tonight describes Porterville as a community of caring and spiritual people. After moving to Porterville in 1996, it took me 14 years to find a Christian church in this town that could accept and welcome me as a child of God without asking me to hide my lesbianism or to accept it as sinful. I do not consider that caring or spiritual, I do not consider that Christian. And yes, I know what the Bible says about homosexuality. I also know that Christians do not agree on the meaning of those few brief passages. At one time, I studied everything written about them in order to respond to Christians who use the Bible to condemn people I love. But when I recognized the hate generated by those debates, I realized that by participating in them, I was doing the same thing my opponents were doing. I was using the Word of God to win a human argument, and that is not what one does with Scripture. For Christians, the Bible is a sacred text, it is not to be wielded as a weapon against any of God's children. As you consider your votes tonight, remember that what you do and say here is of enormous consequence, particularly to future generations of youth in our community. Many of the LGBT speakers who have come before you, including me, were once those youth, and we can tell you what we have learned from our experience. It gets better when we don't have to hide who we are. It gets better when we are treated with dignity and fairness. It gets better when we work for justice, when we find allies with whom to build a better future. And because we know it gets better, we will not stop. Members of the council, do your job. It's very simple. Serve all the citizens of Porterville. If you choose to rescind the proclamation, you are denying due process and equal treatment to one valuable segment of this community. You are choosing to discriminate based on personal convictions that public officials are required to exclude for the common good. Even worse, you will sow seeds of further division and intolerance. Porterville deserves better. Again, I say to you, do your job so that future generations can say of us, in 2013, in Porterville, California, it got better.
Thank you. I want to have to say it again. Please, go ahead.
My name is Catherine Hall. My address is 258 South Linderoe in Lindsay. And I'd like to speak to item 22. I am a pediatrician. I've been practicing in Tulare County for the last 35 years. I'm a, I've got a husband and three children and grandchildren. I serve on the Tulare County Suicide Prevention Task Force. I've served on the school board in Lindsay in the past for many years. The only purpose that rescinding the proclamation would serve would be to show animosity toward the LGBT community. There is no benefit to anyone to rescind this. I would like to remind the council and the public that being lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender is a normal variation of human sexuality, of humanity. And since I've gotten to know more LGBT people in Tulare County, you know, I can see that there is a reason that it is not pathological, it is just a normal condition. That doesn't mean the way everyone is, that's the way some people are, and everybody's different. So there is really no reason to express this kind of animus against the group. There's good data showing that the LGBT people are not pathological. There are arguments, there's the medical conditions which might have different incidence in different populations should govern the way government looks at groups, and that's really quite unreasonable because every different population has different risks. And these are medical matters, these are not matters to discriminate on rights on. So I would really encourage you to not rescind this proclamation. The impact on young people growing up, when they hear this kind of very, I mean, because they talk about them, is very, very damaging. And the people may mean well when they are saying they love homosexuals, but to hear the religious arguments about it after being told that they're loved is just very, very damaging to especially our young people. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Kristi Burkhart, and I live on 1400 block of West James Street in Porterville. I can waste my time trying to sway your decision with logic, I quote, "a wave or angry declarations" as some did last week or last meeting. I can call you gentlemen out for acting like petty teenagers with grudge, because in some ways, that's what you have done. But why waste time on all that when I no longer have faith that you will do the right thing? Should you decide to rescind this proclamation, I will give you one example of a person who greatly deserves the recognition you seek to take away. By rescinding this proclamation, you are rescinding recognition of a person dear to my heart, a mentor who stood by me after the death of my brother by a DUI driver in 1999. This woman encourages me in my writing and praised me in recommendation letters to a multitude of universities when I sought my BA and my MA. I can talk to her honestly and forthrightly about my depression, my father's illness, and the dissatisfaction I have felt over my life as a bully, fat child growing up in this town. This woman is Amory Waxstaff, a professor of English at Porterville College. She stands by all of her students, LGBT or not, and tries to provide each with the tools they need for their lives as students and beyond. Like other members of our LGBT community in Porterville, she has inspired me to speak up against those who would stigmatize me and others like me simply because our bodies and lives do not conform to what others want. She, like so many others, are special because of what she has done to help. Rescind the proclamation if you will, but such a decision will not stop me from proclaiming on my own. On behalf of the non-LGBT community, we are proud of you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Cindy Dominguez. Can you bring it down? Cindy Dominguez, my address is 229 South Warren Place.
I'm sorry, what is it?
229.
The Madam's address, if you can say.
Cindy Dominguez.
Cindy Dominguez.
I just wanted to address this, mayor, from your standpoint. And just to remind you that as mayor, you were elected to represent the people of our community as a whole, just like the rest of the council members were elected to represent the people of our community as a whole. Yet at the last meeting that you handed out that proclamation that we're here talking about, four of the council members shared that they didn't agree nor support that proclamation that you presented and that you had done it without their support. As mayor and leader of this council, it was first your moral duty to listen and to heed the counsel of those elected to represent our community and for you to rightly represent our community. And second, it was your legal obligation to be in compliance with our city's charter, which states that official acts endorsed by the official seal may only be made by a majority of the council's approval. So I'm just here this evening to ask if you rescind the proclamation that was presented last month, not based on my religious beliefs, not based on my personal preference, but based on the fact that it was not a legally issued proclamation, it wasn't done the way our city charter said that it needed to be done. And I would also like to encourage you, because you said you're a woman of faith, you know, Proverbs 11:14 talks about our council, and it says, "Where there is no guidance, the people fall; but in the abundance of counselors, there is victory." And I don't know that poor people is an abundance, but it's more than one, and it's, you know, to consider your council, the members that you have, is being a good leader. And I would challenge you to rise to that occasion and to be a great leader who doesn't just take into account a group, but as a whole, and listens to your council, who we elected to represent us as well. Also, Proverbs 15:22 says, "Without consultation, plans are frustrated, but counselors are peace of joy." And so I just wanted to encourage you with that as well. And I hear a lot of, "This is about equality," and it seems that Gay Pride Month, it really doesn't give homosexuals any legal rights or anything more than what they already have. This is just basically more about trying to get people who don't agree with and who identify their behavior as wrong to say, "We agree with you and it's okay." And to call it Gay Pride Month, it doesn't give them any more rights than they have already. They can still walk around and say, "I'm proud to be gay," after that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Smith. I'm not that good at speaking, I'm not going to stand up here and wag my finger like you guys are dogs, like other people have done. I am choosing to read a letter that I published today. Ding dong, dome is dead. Good written, Prop 8. Ideally, all the bigotry and stigmatization associated with marriage equality and homosexuality will follow suit, though that is only in an ideal world. However, Porterville City Council should follow suit. There's absolutely nothing to gain from rescinding a proclamation for a Pride Month that would have already occurred by the time they reach a vote, or reach a vote. Therefore, it should be removed from the council agenda. Porterville is not a city for itself, it is a part of California. Although members of our city would like to believe in small-town values, homophobia should not be one of those pod-up values. Therefore, although city council members are certainly entitled to their own opinions, they should follow greater laws of California when it comes to governmental duties. Council members have agreed to follow the laws of the land. Well, the law of the land is that, quote, "There is no rational basis for limiting the designation of marriage to opposite-sex couples," end quote, Perry versus Schwarzenegger. In the same way, there is no rational basis for denying a proclamation to a group due to their sexual and gender orientation. There is nothing to gain from aggressive politics, and council members should accept that the mayor acted within the scope of her duties and move on to other things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Brad Davis, 261 North Larson. With regard to the mayor's proposal, there's been a lot of passionate debate from both sides. Some of the exchanges have been generated into name-calling and outright misrepresentation, which is, to put it mildly, unfortunate. Real Christians oppose hatred, whatever the source. We stand firmly in our opposition, whether the source of hatred is within the Christian community, like Westboro Baptist Church, which falsely teaches us doctrine that God hates gay men and women. We also oppose people who choose to falsely label Christians as bigots, hate mongers, and homophobes. To blindly accuse us in this manner is to be just as guilty as the very crimes you would attach to us, and every bit is hypocritical. The vast majority of Christians oppose Mayor Barola's proclamation, not out of fear, hatred, or bigotry, but for two very different reasons. The first is out of loving concern for any and all individuals whose actions might cause them to spend eternity relationally separated from God. And the second is the fact that the mayor's proclamation violates the teachings of our Father. We believe that the God we worship and serve is the embodiment of pure, perfect love. His Word gives us hope and direction and the promise of eternal life. That Word, which is the foundation of our faith, also teaches us that certain actions or behavior will lead to eternal separation from God. We are also taught that His Word must be shared with all people. So for the followers of Christ to believe in these principles and do nothing is tantamount to a denial of our faith. It must be recognized that most Christians have family members and/or friends who are gay, and the vast majority continue to love them no matter what. Rather than fear or hatred, the feelings we experience most are an odd combination of anxiety and hope because we want the best for all people. God does too, and we believe the best life has to offer can only be realized when one is in a personal, loving relationship with God, remaining true to His words. Christian opposition to behavior God has declared wrong should not be the result of a judgmental heart or a sense of moral superiority, for we too are sinners. As such, we know that apart from the relationship we have with God through Christ, we'd be in huge trouble. We recognize that certain individuals and institutions within the Christian community do not conduct themselves thus. These people and institutions we oppose with every fiber of our being, just as we oppose Mayor Barola's proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Jessica Mahoney, Porterville. I don't know, I'm under the doctor in the house if someone can get their ears checked. It's not your proclamation. Anybody in the city of Porterville can make a proclamation, and the mayor just signs it. I think we went over this a hundred times. And some people that think the mayor didn't do her job right, or didn't, you know, do the proclamation right, well then, if that's true, then we would have to rescind every proclamation this seating body has ever done. And we don't vote on the mayor. We don't vote on the mayor. We vote on the council. And then they played a little, you know, musical chair thing for the charter. But this is getting tiresome. And, you know, people watching this, June 26th, the Supreme Court said, "We have the same rights as every other citizen in the United States." There's no us, there's no we, there's no Christian, there's no not, the United States of America. We're all equal under the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Maria Enos, 690 Sandra Circle, Porterville. I've been a teacher in this community since, you know, 21 years. And one of the curriculums they ask us to incorporate in our teaching at every level is teaching tolerance. And I think that outweighs so much. Some of us wear the rainbow delegation bracelet to let kids know it's okay. We're not proclaiming, we are not saying, "This is the way you need to be." I am, my sexualized my own business. I am the supporter of the community, LGBT. I am supporter of everybody. I think it's important. My classroom last year was touched with suicide. And I know that the members of this community that we honor with the proclamation have been working tirelessly on the anti-bullying program that can reach everybody, not just the LGBT community. People have different body shapes, whatever. And I am talking against rescinding it in that matter. And also, we can't, don't always represent everybody. I mean, during the Holocaust, you had to ask yourself, who is going to blame? If not me, then who? And if not now, when? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
May I, Mayor Barola, council members? My name is Sidney Pedrosa, my address is on record. I'm going to speak it temporarily, just real quickly, regarding the consideration of the process of my city's proclamations are approved. It's not a bad idea to visit that kind of a subject. I think there's some wisdom in relooking at this. There's a lot of things, I've noticed in this room, can admit that at one point or another, we missed something, we overlooked something, and thanks to an outside person who pointed it out, we were able to see that, hey, you know what, I didn't miss it, I didn't, you know, thank you for pointing it out, because I hadn't seen it the way that you did it. So I think that 21 is something that, yeah, you should look at. As far as the consideration of rescinding the city proclamation of the LGBT Pride Month for June 2013, when I was here the last time, I have no qualms about saying that I'm a Christian. I don't have any qualms about saying that I believe what the Word of God says, the Holy Bible. I have no qualms about saying that I believe what God has stated in there. But I think if you recall, last time that I was here, Mayor Barola and council members, if number 22 read tonight, consideration rescinding the city proclamation of heterosexual marriages Pride Month, I would still stand before you tonight to say, "Rescind that." Because here's what I see happening with taking one group, there's no question, you know, that it's an issue about sexual preference or orientation or lifestyle, that if you give one whole month to one single group that does good deeds, you only have 11 months left when we have more groups, more than 11 during the whole city of Porterville, that we could not assign them sufficient months to recognize them and to give them the proclamation they so well deserve themselves. So on the basis of that, just, you know, I think number 23, it's a good idea to consider a single resolution that would encompass all of these groups. My reason for that, again, nothing against, you know, people choosing to live their sexual lifestyle different than mine, but I just think that number 22 really is discriminatory and leaves out all these other groups that should also be recognized for doing just as much as this particular group, if not more. So I would just request that you reconsider, you know, taking that out so that it doesn't become discriminatory and leave out all of these other good deed-doer groups that we have in our city, for which we don't have enough months left in the year to cover them. So again, I just request that you would take a look at that and visit that, and then, I don't, you know, what I have seen in the argument that has gone on in the past couple of sessions and even tonight, when people can't win the argument, they start attacking them personally. They give us, you know, labels, they call us, you know, homophobes, they call us a decay. No, that's not true. That's not true. I could very easily work somebody to the gate, I just don't agree with their sexual lifestyle. So I just would ask you to consider who's doing the, you know, attack of or mischaracterization of what group. You will notice that we who are Christians have not done that to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
hate. No, that’s not true. That’s not true. I could very easily work somebody to the gate, I just don’t agree with their sexual lifestyle. So I just would ask you to consider who’s doing the, you know, attack or mischaracterization of what group, and you’ll notice that we who are Christians have not done that to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
The proclamation must necessarily be rescinded in order to maintain the integrity of the Porterville City Council. To add to that, I would like to, I would urge this council to understand that the core issue of this debate is our present and future ability to exercise our freedoms of speech, of conscience, and of religious expression in the marketplace. We still at present are protected by law when we voice our religious convictions regarding the homosexual lifestyle. But even under that protection, look what’s happening. Our freedoms are being aggressively removed by those whose battle cries to silence our voice, to remove our voice out of the public square. When this type of mental worldview takes hold, it can be generated into a type of fascism. Outrageous, you might say? Consider, in a search of my President Obama’s appointee to the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, Chai Felton, she said, “Private thoughts and objections to the homosexual issue should not be tolerated.” She is now in position to enforce her opinion against all employers in the United States with the backing of the President of the United States. For example, Elaine Huganen, a small photography business owner, she declined to photograph a homosexual union, stating that her Christian belief is in traditional marriage only. Soon after, she was charged with discrimination by the Human Rights Commission on behalf of the lesbian couple and faced a $7,000 fine for violating the rights of the lesbian couple who were demanding she perform a service that violated her conscience. A youth pastor, Steven Boyzen, wrote a letter to the editor-at-charge in his town stating his objections to the homosexual lifestyle. There was a complaint filed by a homosexual man, and Steven was brought before the Human Rights Tribunal and charged with hate crime. He was fined $10,000, which was paid to the person that brought the complaint and told to write a public apology and warned not to write anything in objection to the homosexual lifestyle again. Scott Brokey owns a small printing business and chose not to print homosexual material for a couple because it went against his Christian belief. He was brought before the Human Rights Commission and charged with discrimination, fined $5,000, and told that as long as his business served the public, he was advised not to refuse any service to anyone. It is not equality the homosexual community wants. They want to silence religious expression and anyone else who opposes their lifestyle. I would urge this council to not participate in this systematic removal of our constitutional freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you. One minute left.
Your Honor, move to, anybody who wants to speak, let them speak.
Absolutely.
Can we have, I’m sorry, I apologize, but if you please have some quiet.
So much of what’s been debated and reported in the past several weeks, although very important, has really missed the point of the opposition to the proclamation. The procedure for approving and issuing proclamations is not well-defined and not specifically addressed in the city charter, perhaps because proclamations are not legally binding and do not create legal issues affecting the citizens of Porterville. Unfortunately, the simple process became tainted recently, and because that happened, nobody wants to see it happen again. I trust you’ll come up with a way to have at least three council members consent or unanimous consent prior to issuing future proclamations. More importantly, though, I want to urge you to rescind the proclamation which was made unilaterally by Mayor Barola in June. The proclamation was made, a document was issued, and that’s done. And I’m not suggesting you physically take back the certificate. I do believe, however, that it’s the duty of the council to rescind the proclamation and set it straight in the record so that the council’s actions will be in line with your governing document, which is the city charter. Four of five council members did not sign the proclamation. Three of those four made lengthy statements describing their reasons. Those are the, those and the mayor acknowledged that she was acting alone in making the proclamation. In spite of this, it was delivered on a certificate bearing the title “City of Porterville.” The language included “due hereby proclaim the month of June 2013 as LGBT Pride Month in the City of Porterville.” Although all agree the mayor acted alone and without council consent, the proclamation was made on city time, on city stock, and on behalf of the City of Porterville. Section 9 of the city charter reads, quote, “All powers granted to, invested in the City of Porterville by law or by the provisions of this charter shall, except as herein otherwise provided, be exercised by the council.” Section 12 was on the state that the consent requires a three-vote majority. In other words, no single council member, including the mayor, has the authority to act alone on behalf of the city. That is reserved for the full council. Section 4 specifically directs that the authority to use both the common seal of the city, the oranges and the leaves, and the official seal, the foil stamp, is reserved for the City of Porterville alone. That does not include any one member, the majority of the council. By the inclusion of the City of Porterville title and the language declaring the proclamation for the City of Porterville and the inclusion of both the common and official seals of the city, the proclamation did indeed become city business. I’ve been at enough council meetings to understand that this council is concerned about process and proper procedure and to know that you want to get it right. And I’m confident that none of you wish to operate outside the parameters of the city charter. You will have the opportunity to correct the immediate issue in just a few minutes by voting to rescind the proclamation made by the mayor in June, and I urge you to do so. And in this way, the mistake can be corrected in the record, and then you may address the procedure at Simon’s, as I said. So that similar incidents do not occur. Thank you. They took about.
Thank you. Next, please.
I already told everybody to please stop. We’ve got them on both sides, so if we can please do this in an orderly manner so that we can get through this and get to where everybody wants, and that’s the vote.
My name is Mayor, Councilman, and those in attendance. My name is David Harris. Five generations of my family have lived in Porterville, attended schools here, owned businesses, and then active and involved members in this community. I myself have lived here for 47 years and have been a local business owner for 35 years. I have attended many council meetings, public works project meetings, and community service functions over the years. I never thought I would mean to publicly address issues pertaining to the individual’s sexual preference at a public city meeting. I also could not imagine there would come a day that individuals voted into public offices who attempt to force their own personal agenda on anyone, especially not an entire community or nation. I am opposed to the City of Porterville celebrating any person’s sexual preference or choice. Sexual issues are not city or government-based business. The proclamation for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and tri-sexual group was made by one person and does not have the support of the city council or the citizens of this community. Yet it has been endorsed with the official City of Porterville seal. Official acts can only be made when the majority of the council agrees. On these grounds alone, the proclamation should be revoked. The proclamation also did not express the will of the people that elected each of you into office. I respectfully ask each of you, the mayor and the city council members, to act as a group, not as individuals, and to stay within the legal guidelines of your job description. I pray your decisions as a group will always favor what is best interest of the entire community and include godly counsel and wisdom. This issue has been a waste of city business time, counterproductive. I ask that the proclamation be removed tonight, but no further discussion or city business time spent on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilman, Robin Larden, address is on record. Courage and I, again, bullies, homophobes. All these are well-known terms applied to people that are opposed to this proclamation that you made. Frankly, I don’t agree with the technical argument that has been levied here against you, Mayor, that there’s some technical aspect that required three votes. I don’t think that has been done in the past. So, Mayor, you’ve taken quite a bit of criticism over this proclamation, over its technical procedural ground, about the stamp with oranges and all of that. Nobody’s ever raised those issues before. So I think that’s wrong, merits. I think there’s a much broader issue as to why this proclamation should be rescinded. First of all, the governing body can go back and rescind anything it wants, within the powers of this governing body. You’re the custodians of the public trust. You’re a representative body, supposed to represent the values of this community and represent the community as a whole. And very clearly, this proclamation is in conflict with the values of this community. We heard some speakers here earlier talk, use that word, class, LGBTQ, and I’m getting them realize that the LGBTQ now is getting, you know, is getting the majority on the alphabet now. Talked about the established class, and should class be designated based on sexual acts? Regardless of what the nine old swine on Supreme Court say, that’s still up for debate as the people can ultimately decide that and amend even the federal constitution. Sorry. Power doesn’t emanate from the government, and that is the difference between the LGBT movement and the civil rights movement in the 1960s. The civil rights movement in the 1960s came from the people, did not come from the government. This resolution, you hear jeers, when you hear insults, when people don’t like, when you hear what, they don’t like what you hear. That’s been prevalent. Sorry, Mayor, it’s prevalent over here, because there are gentlemanial profanity covered with a cough. Who are the real bullies? I submit to you, the real bullies come from the LGBT side and not from the people who want good governance and want you to have proclamations and past ordinances and resolutions coming out of this body that reflect the values of this community. Rescind it. I resent you to replace it, but this is, council towards replacement resolution is inclusive. Goodwill towards all, everyone. Whoever says that this isn’t inclusive can’t read English. Goodwill, charity towards all. It means what it says. That’s all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Christina Harris. Four generations of my family have lived in Porterville, attended schools here, owned businesses, and been active and involved members of this community. I have heard the supporters of the LGBT group say that their issues are not about sex, that it is about love. That statement is not true. I, Christina, love a woman. I share the most personal and intimate details of my life with her. I hug her. I even say to her, “I love you.” We are closely connected. She is my best friend of over 35 years. We are not lesbians. Sex is the dividing factor. I do not understand how sex of any style has become a public issue, nor do I agree it should be. As long as it involves consenting adults and individual sexual preference is between those adults, it should be private, behind closed doors, not public. This is not, nor has it ever been, an issue that belongs in government, state, county, or city business. This is a personal issue. If individuals want to celebrate anything, it should be done within a group of like-minded people. No community should be forced to acknowledge or celebrate another sexual preference. I find it disturbing and absurd that sexual issues are even allowed in public meetings. This proclamation should have never been made and should be reversed and rescinded. I do not hate anyone. I do not target people that have different beliefs or lifestyles. I do not try and force my beliefs on anyone. Yet I feel like I am being bullied by the LGBT group. They want to force their personal choices on myself, my family, and my community. I do not believe anyone has the right to force their beliefs on others. Everyone has a right to live the way they choose. No one has the right to push their personal preference agenda upon others. Yes, I am a Christian. I believe these groups continue to force their beliefs and preferences on everyone because they think that if the majority say it’s okay, they will feel better about themselves. Deep down, they can never feel good about their choice because God did not create humans sexually to be with the same sex. Just take a second to think about the design of our bodies. The sexual organ parts were created for a man and a woman to reproduce. God did not create people to be homosexual. The world we live in has become very sinful due to individuals choosing to live outside of biblical and moral standards. Whether you believe it or not, believe in God or not, there is coming a day that each of us will be held accountable for our choices and actions. God is the only true judge. I disagree with simple choices, yet I mercifully pray for the sinner. This is the proper Christian stance. I have compassion and love for those who are lost from our Savior. Please rescind the proclamation.
Thank you. I apologize to those who are listening.
Dear Madam Mayor and Councilmember, Laura Borowski from Springville.
Just a little bit.
Laura Borowski from Springville, California. What is this time coming to when it allows businesses to operate in Porterville that encourages drug use by selling drugs, paraphernalia, and also encourages the use of a hooky eating establishment? So tell me this, why did the Porterville’s mayor bully us into a proclamation declaring June as an LGBT Pride Month? What are we, what are we celebrating? Sex? Isn’t it bad enough that Proposition 8 was not defended by our governor and attorney general, who are elected to represent us? We, the people, passed Proposition 8, simply defending the word “marriage” to mean the union between one man and one woman. After the Supreme Court, on standing, the Ninth District Court of Appeals completely disregarded the appeal process, immediately homosexual ceremonies took place in SF and LA, where the democracy and this process, where is our representative republic? Where is the power of the individual’s vote? What about the expressed will of the people through legal process? Just because the state has betrayed its own citizens does not mean Porterville has to follow suit. Stop bullying us. Rescind the proclamation on the 16th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Lois Guinness, 1148 West Glen, Porterville.
Honorable council members, concerned citizens, and staff. I speak for many retired citizens, many of whom have become friends in Porterville during the 22 years that my husband and I and our extended family have lived here. We think the proclamation was a good thing. Perhaps it helped to heal some of the sadness that has been caused by people who conceive of themselves, who see themselves as very tolerant, but who actually are not as broad-minded as many people in other parts of the United States. I just hope that everyone can think about how you would feel if you found that your child were in a position where you hate to see them, or how you would feel if, if this was really something that you had to deal with. I really am pleased, and many of my friends who will not speak out, because many of our friends are also totally on the other side. And we like to be kind to everyone, but we, many of us do approve your proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Dave Mast, 1301 Gene. I am claustrophobic, so it’s crowded in here. I’m a little bit eruditephobic, I don’t like black little spiders, but I am not homophobic. I just simply don’t agree. But I think maybe we’re kind of off-base just a little bit, and I’m not trying to be disrespectful to anybody, but I think what this meeting is serving to do is probably cause a greater divide because we are probably never going to agree. I have strong beliefs on one side, some have strong beliefs on the other side. And for government to get involved, I think it just widens the divide. It’s just, just my opinion. I think it would serve us better if we did something that was more inclusive. And I know that in a multitude of councilors, we can find wisdom, so I appreciate the decisions that are made for our entire council because you do represent us. I’m a pastor in this community, and I did not bring my Bible because the place for my beliefs is in my pulpit. This is the place for city government. And when we choose one side on a moral issue, I think what we do is we encourage debate that we will never win. What’s going on in the Mideast shows us that when it comes to religious debates, they can go on for thousands of years. So I think this is not the place to debate these issues. I think this is the place for government. So if we do something that is more inclusive and tolerant of all people, I think it would serve our community much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one.
Martin Kiyongian, 18th Street, West School Avenue. Like many others, I'm not for what's popular, but what's, what is true. And it seems that our, our society is moving towards, knowing all the polls and all the, all the information, and if the mass is doing it, it must be right, and I don't, I don't think that is the case, and I'm sure that you know that's not necessarily the case. The media does have a strong bias, according to Pew Research Center, but half of the news coverage on the recent Supreme Court cases were favoring same-sex marriage, almost fifty percent, and the articles that were not in support of it were only about nine percent of the storylines, when, when we know that the country is pretty much almost divided down the middle. So there's a bias in our media. So if we listen to the media too much, we're influenced in a way that's not based in reality. I, I just wanna, I'm concerned about, a lot of times people bring up our posterity, our young generation coming up, a lot of mixed messages that they're hearing. And my concern is, as was referred to earlier, we're trying to legislate public counselors, psychologists, and psychiatrists from not being allowed to do, to counsel young people in, in a way that is disapproved by the, the groups that say, based on science, but we don't have the science, we don't see the science before us, and it's debatable. And so it's unfortunate. As far as that Supreme Court case, it was not well-done constitutional. The Supreme Court said that the group that brought the measure didn't have standing to represent the case, and that even the Supreme Court justice said, "We don't have enough information. This institution is newer than cell phones or the internet." So there's still legal grounds to be looked at. And I apologize, but I just hope that he's considered the right path, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next one.
My name is Bob Rugman. I live at 466 Green Acre Drive, and I appreciate your opportunity to speak this evening. I would like to draw your attention to the sign above our city seal that says, "In God we trust." And I believe one of the questions that we're here asked is, "Who is that God?" And I did bring my Bible with me because it's the only time I know when I'm right. It's when I read it, when I speak. We've spoken about tolerance and intolerance. We have a God that is intolerant. His Word always works, but He's an intolerant God in that He has a holiness that He requires of those who proclaim that they are His. And His Word is sincere, His Word is true. If you'll, those of you that have a Bible, in the very beginning, the first chapter of the book tells us about our God, and it says, "In the beginning, God, God created the heavens and the earth, and created everything. He created man and woman." That same God, I'm gonna read from Romans, Chapter One, probably heard it before. Within the book of Romans, Paul lists numbers of sins and things that miss God's mark, that miss God's holiness. And when he talks about homosexuality is only one of a plethora of sins that he speaks about, but all sin is sin to God, and He's not open to negotiations. I'm gonna read for you a couple of verses, beginning in Romans, Chapter One, verse sixteen, it says, "For I am not ashamed of the gospel of Christ, but the power of God's salvation to everyone who believes, to the Jew first and to the Greek," that would be you and I of the nations. "For in it the righteousness of God is revealed from faith to faith; as it is written, the just shall live by faith." Verse eighteen says, "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men, who suppress the truth in unrighteousness. Because that which may be known of God is manifested to them; for God has shown it to them; for since the creation of the world, his invisible attributes are clearly seen, being understood by the things that are made." That means that you and I are going to be held accountable for what we choose, and I want to encourage this council in the fact that we trust in God, if indeed we do, that we follow His words, not what I think His word says, not what anyone here determines His word says, but by reading His word and looking sincerely at what His word says.
Thank you. Next one.
Melissa McMurray, Porterville, California. As a community organizer for Gay Porterville, suicide prevention facilitator for the Chevron Project, member of Key Flag and active in all and many more since 2011, I would like to take the time to again thank you because since this has happened, I have repeatedly received an outcry of you thanking myself and the great people standing here in this room with me today for being their voice. Regardless if the proclamation is rescinded or not, the door is open for a safe place for those who are afraid to be who they are. I hope you consider keeping it intact because it has done a great deal more positive work, it has done a great deal more positive for us, for far more many people than any of the claims that this is impacting heterosexual couples in their personal lives. And then I have a quote that I just have come across that I kinda wanna read to you guys. "Gay pride was not born out of the need to celebrate being gay, but our rights exist without persecution. So instead of wondering why there isn't a straight pride movement, be thankful that you don't need one."
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm glad I could be here this evening. I took a class once at Arizona State University. I'm sorry?
Your name is?
John Hallberg. I live here in Porterville. I've lived here for about ten years. While I was taking a class, it was my advanced class, at Arizona State University, and we were lucky enough to have an instructor from the People's Republic of China. And we talked quite a great deal about the revolution in China and everything, and actually we got very much off the subject of art, which is really why he was there. And I said, "Well, what happened?" Because there was a time there when the people actually kind of ran the country, they owned it, and we've seen that in, in Egypt, we've seen that during this Arab Spring, and we've seen it in Cuba, we've seen it in, in Russia even. When the people actually had a democracy, even if it was just for a fleeting moment. And what happened to that, and how were, how did they get robbed of that? By allowing the people to take a power grab for something that they weren't entitled to. They decided that they were smarter than the people in general, who were just a teeming mob as far as their concern, and that their more brilliant concept of what the world should be is something that we should follow irregardless of what the law was or what the people wanted. And as a result, these people lost what they cherished the most, what they gave their blood for was just swept away by people who just were power-mad and just grabbed the power and assumed that they were entitled to it somehow. We cannot let that happen. This is a power grab by the mayor, Your Honor, with due respect, and if the rest of us just sit back and let it happen, we may as well just throw everything we've got in the trashcan and, and forget about it. If you don't stand up for what matters, you've got nothing. You've got nothing. And when you lose, it's a permanent loss. You can, you can win, but that's only temporary, and that happens over and over. We won with Prop eight over and over. It's only temporary. But when you lose, it's with finality. You'll never get that freedom back, you'll never get that respect back, you'll never get that moral authority that the government is supposed to have. We're not supposed to just agree with everything that comes down the road. We're supposed to analyze it, and honestly, I don't see what other people's sexual practices have to do with me, or Porterville, or any of this assembly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Mehmet McNally. I live in Springville, California. I agree with what the mayor just said recently about if we don't stand up for what we believe in, we've got nothing. I honor and respect the work of the council members and the mayor. I think that the rescension of this proclamation is simply uninspirated and is not an opportunity for us to advocate for a more inclusive, vibrant community. I've lived here for long enough to be part of this community, and I stand strongly and firmly in my belief that Springville and Porterville and Tulare County has potential to advocate for the inclusion of everyone, especially the youth. We've all seen the statistics towards teen suicide and violence, and I think that our city council, a group of adults who cannot stand forward towards something that is inclusive, is shameful. And more importantly, I'd like to speak to the people of Porterville.
Just a minute. Could you please turn around and address the council?
I'd like to speak to the people of Porterville and address their concerns about all the things that have been said tonight, all that has been said. I have really nothing else to add, except that we owe it to ourselves, to our faith, to our children, to be an inclusive, loving community, and if the rescension of a proclamation of this nature works against that, then I myself work against it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else who should come forward? If not, go ahead. She's looking for you. Thank you.
My name is Maureen Cruz, 1076 March Beverly Street in Porterville. I just have something very short to say. I appreciate all of your hard work. I believe that a proclamation, if we make a proclamation for our city, that the most important consideration is that it should reflect our entire community. And I believe that, I had a saying with my seven children, and I said, like whether it's, like whether they're watching on television or whatever, I say, "When in doubt, leave it out." So if you're not entirely sure it's good for you, or if we're not entirely sure that it's good for our community, I would just say, "Leave it out." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
It's Carlos Gomez. Carlos Gomez, in Springville, I just hit the record. Just listening to everything that's been said today, you know, it really hurts the fact that we're, we're almost borderline institutionalized racism here. We're almost borderline institutionalized discrimination here. Like, it's, it's no wonder to me why kids are killing themselves. You know, if you remember, one of the reasons this, this began was to prevent suicide, to prevent bullying, because kids are dying in our community, and that's sad. It's our future that's dying, and it, and it hurts to hear, you know, how, how we can come up here and, and use the word of God, really, to, to make a leverage on this point, when we should really be looking within ourselves first, how we individually act with the community. There's kids that are dying at our schools, fans of bullying. There's kids that are dying just because they're gay. So we have to ask ourselves, if we rescind the proclamation, what message is this gonna send to the community? What message is this gonna be sent to the kids? Is this gonna be a green light for all bullies around the schools to continue what they're doing? And if it is, how is the city council gonna actually wager a lawsuit against this, if possible? Have you all considered that? That by doing this, things might happen that might trickle back to you, by rescinding this proclamation? It's kinda hard for me to sit here and actually, you know, say this, because it might happen. How would you all feel? You know, if this comes around, like, how do you all sleep at night? It's very difficult for me to sit here and actually say these words, because it hurts. I have friends that are gay, and I have friends that have been bullied, and I have friends that have been beaten up. You know, when people told me, "Coming here to Porterville was gonna be very interesting, and there was gonna be a lot of, you know, little boys," as they call it? You know, I wouldn't have believed that. I still refuse to believe it for the fact that I saw pictures, and I saw historical pictures of, of the KKK marching down Porterville. It's in the history. I'm, I'm sorry, I hate to say it, but it is at one point. So is this the next thing that's gonna happen? You know, when is this gonna turn into an issue of stopping violence? When is this gonna turn into an issue that really hits home for every single one of these persons that are reaching the, the length of my voice? Can we call ourselves human if we cannot even exist with another human being? We can talk about not being hateful about this, we can talk about all these different things, but the clear fact of the matter is that this is Porterville institutionalized discrimination. I would caution you, because you're theater-tottering on the legal line. You know, anyways, I, I hope you look deep within your hearts, and I hope you have read a story of somebody that has died because of this, because this is your chance to prevent it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have one more, two more, and soon we're gonna take a break, so please.
My name is Batu. I'm here from Porterville. Batu's what? Batu. I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm exhausted. I came here exhausted, I came here frustrated, and I'm probably gonna leave here exhausted and frustrated, and I have a feeling this is gonna continue for a long time. I grew up most of my life in Porterville, and I'm, and I hated every single minute of it. I hated being at school, I hated being at home, I hated being a member of this community. I still do. It's frustrating to live here. It hurts to live here. To me, this proclamation is more than just being prideful. I am a gay man, I'm Mexican, I've struggled all my life, it's been exhausting being here. This proclamation is more than just about pride. I'm not even prideful here. It's hard. To me, it's about acknowledging my presence, it's about acknowledging that I'm here, acknowledging my struggle, the fact that I go to school and I feel insecure, I feel scared, the fact that I go home and I feel like I can't be honest with my family because to this point I'm still not up to them. And, I don't know, I have a lot to say, I have a lot of feelings, but I will say this, things are changing. It's changing slowly, and it's gonna be hard, and it's gonna be frustrating, and I see myself being in this room a lot more. It goes beyond this proclamation, it goes to not me being a member of the city. I don't wanna hate the city. For me to not hate it, I'm gonna have to create change. We all have to create change. What the mayor did is created a change. This proclamation might not even get through. Honestly, I don't think it will. None of you are gonna change your mind, and I'm okay with that. I'm okay with your convictions, just like I'm okay with mine, and I will fight for them, and I will defend them, because I am tired, like I said, of being exhausted, of having to bend over backwards, about having, feel like I'm gonna offend someone because I'm walking into the room. I don't wanna feel that way. I am a human being. I deserve to be who I am, I deserve to feel comfortable, I deserve to be, feel comfortable and safe here. I don't wanna walk down the street like I do every day and hear homophobic slurs thrown at me. I don't deserve to go through that. I don't deserve that either through other members of this community. And like I said, it's okay to feel the way you do. I'm fine with that. That's where I grew up, and that's what I'm used to being. But after today, that proclamation is more than just a piece of paper. It has created a movement that will not stop in the city because I wanna be, I wanna be able to say I'm proud of being in Porterville.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm a citizen of Porterville, citizen of California, and citizen of the United States, as are each of you. I know you each consider yourselves very patriotic.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
I know, I know each one of you consider yourself very patriotic, and since it looks like I'm gonna be the last one, I just wanna take the opportunity to correct a few things that were heard here. I've heard a lot about the Bible, and I'm not here to talk about the Bible. I'm not a Christian. There's many members of our community who are also not Christian, and they're not here. Then we have Buddhists, we have people from various religions in the Indian, Asian, Indian community. The whole world's religions are represented here in Porterville, even if they're not here to be allowed. You know that. You know that, you walk around every day, and you know who's who, okay? So City Hall is not a church, that's the most important thing. There's a lot of churches that apparently have a lot of doctrinal differences among themselves, and they're all Christian of one sort or another, but they don't all agree. But that doesn't mean everybody considers what's part of a Christian doctrine appropriate for anything other than church, certainly not for City Hall. As far as, someone said that Prop eight has not been declared constitutional, that's just factually wrong. Yes, the Supreme Court said particular people do not have standing. They worked out the rules of standing soon after the Constitution was adopted in around seventeen ninety, probably before eighteen hundred, those rules started to be made. There's nothing to do here. The court determined that the rules that are hundreds of years old, that the lower court's rulings stand, and there is no doubt that Judge Walker's ruling declared Prop eight unconstitutional. I stood before you almost five years ago, and I said, it'll take about five years, and that's exactly what's going to happen, and now it's here. So I'm here to tell you that. It was also told to you that the charter, something about Section twelve, requires a vote on ceremonial issues that Ms. Lou told us about last time. Clearly, that's not true. Perhaps they didn't read all the way to Section nineteen, where it specifically says, and each of you has been there before, you've worked under this, and you haven't reached out to the chamber, to the council for ceremonial issues. The duty for that is solely embedded in the mayor, it's in Section nineteen, duties of the mayor, in your charter, for you to read. These are the issues before you today. You heard about being spirited, this. I said simply blow down all three of these and move on. There's plenty of months for everybody, and doesn't that be long? It's been plenty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do the right thing.
Thank you. We're going to take a fifteen-minute break, so we will be back.